Thank you. Big difference. Okay, so I want to welcome folks here. Tonight is August 8th. The time is now 7:00. And we will conduct our Select Board meeting. I want to invite everyone here in the room to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, our government, and for liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have a few, three public hearings this evening. We're going to start off with, the first one is a two-request item. Los Trace Compadres LLC doing business as Three Amigos Bar and Grill is seeking a common victual license and a transfer of a liquor license. So let me invite any representatives from that company to come forward. And if you wouldn't mind, just so, we have a recording secretary who's magically not in the room. So she's going to work off the audio and videotape. If you could just speak into the microphone and tell us your name and affiliation with the organization, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Vigorito. I'm the attorney for the applicants for the transfer of license. And I have with me here the co-owners of the business, David Castro and Francisco Lemus Portillo. And before the board tonight, for the board's consideration is an application for a transfer of an all-alcoholic beverages license for the location where Bobby &amp; Jack's Memphis Barbecue currently is at 1777 Main Street. And the co-owners of this business currently operate a restaurant, a successful restaurant that's been operating continuously since 2017 in Malden, known as Three Amigos Bar and Grill. And they're looking to expand and open another location where Bobby &amp; Jack's currently is. So they've got a significant amount of experience in operating a restaurant, managing liquor. I'm told that they will have serve-safe certification and tip certification for the establishment, for all the employees, and generally hold their restaurant to the highest standards of cleanliness and operation.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to take this in two parts because I haven't read the hearing notice yet on the transfer. So first question is, are there three amigos or two?
There are, in fact, three amigos. The third amigo is Francisco's uncle, actually.
Very good.
And he couldn't be here tonight, but there are three.
No worries, sorry. Just want to make sure. All right, so we have in front of us at first out of the gate, a common victual license. It's not a public hearing per se, but, and you kind of alluded to what you're trying to do, the location, and you folks have a similar operation in another location, right? Is that fair?
In Malden, yes.
Malden? How long have you been in business in Malden?
Since 2017.
Okay, great. And is your intention to try to replicate what you're doing there here, in a similar fashion?
Similar, yeah.
Okay.
Similar menu, similar setup.
Similar setup, yeah.
Very good. All right. Do my colleagues have questions on the common victual side of it?
I have none.
Okay. With that said, I'll take a motion if someone wants to offer one.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the common victual license for Los Trace Compadres LLC doing business as Three Amigos Bar and Grill.
I'll second that.
All right, so for our recording secretary, a motion is offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Kratman. All those, please, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, so that's a four to zero vote. And I neglected at the outset of the meeting, I apologize. But I want to note for the record, and again, for our recording secretary, that Ms. Wellman will not be with us this evening, so there are only four of us at the table. Okay, I will shift now to the transfer of the liquor license. And let me read the hearing notice into the record. So we have that formally on notice. That notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 138 on Tuesday, August 8, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the application of Los Trace Compadres LLC DBA Three Amigos Bar and Grill by David Castro, manager, to transfer an all-alcoholic beverage license from B J M B, Inc., doing business as Bobby &amp; Jack's Memphis Barbecue, and to sell all-alcoholic beverage as a common victualer and operate this license on said premises located at 1777 Main Street, Tewksbury, Mass. Described as having approximately 8,302 square feet with three rooms, one entrance, six exits, and a seating capacity of 214, total occupancy of 235. The hearing will be held in the main hall, Tewksbury Town Hall, 1009 Main Street. As always, we welcome input from the public, and we encourage that to be in written form prior to Thursday, August 3 of 2023. And I will also note that we have a copy here of the formal tombstone notification that was placed in the local papers. So counsel, I know you probably have to repeat some of that, but just kind of, if you can, remind us, if you will, your clients' experience with the service of alcohol.
Sure. So they've been operating Three Amigos Bar and Grill in Malden successfully since 2017 and have continuously dealt with serving alcohol since. The establishment and the employees will be serve-safe and tip-certified and undergo training as well from the owners, from David, from Francisco, and Uncle Francisco as well. And never had any issues.
No issues. I was just going to ask that, okay. Will they be hiring all new staff up here, or will some of their existing staff be working up here?
Some of the existing staff will come over here.
Is that right?
Yeah, some of them, yeah.
All right. And how about the presence of ownership? Will they be here too?
I will be here, yeah.
You will be?
Yeah.
Okay.
So between the three of them, one is expected at least to oversee the launch.
Excellent. Very good. Very good. Okay. Any questions that my colleagues have?
I do.
Mr. Kratman?
Yes. So we've had many restaurants, we've had many, our police department does a wonderful job at notifying all the establishments in our town that they will each year go out and do a check of all the establishments and make sure they're following the rules of the town and the state. So I know you said you're going to have somebody tip-certified, but is there a card reader or anything like that when somebody coming in with the, for coming in for alcohol purchase? Like, how are you, is it just, you take in their license, or is it something you're scanning? Do you have that on any premises? What are you expecting to do?
That's certainly something that the establishment can put in place if the town requests. It's no problem. Do you use that in Malden?
No, right now in Malden, we just ID everybody.
Okay.
On their body.
Visualizing?
Or server self-training to, training to check everybody's IDs. They need to see the actual ID.
Sure. But no opposition to putting a card reader in place?
No, if the town requires, we will put it in place.
I don't think we require anything. It's just something that we ask if that, you know, somebody's following. If you are more than capable of making sure that every card is read and it's, you know, a real ID. I know it's more difficult, especially since we get so many universities around here with the kids getting fake IDs and everything else. So just knowing that and what's going on, because our police will be checking. They will come in, they will, we offer, you know, the police department puts together a video, they offer people to come in, they tell you when they're coming. And yet, we still have issues, believe it or not. But, so you've had no violations through the, either the city of Malden or the ABC?
We had one back in time.
In Malden?
Yeah, 2020.
What was the violation?
There were three ladies who, they told the server to, but they were there last week and they had IDs, fake IDs.
It was a fake ID violation? What was the outcome? I'm sorry? What was the outcome of the hearing? I didn't know about the...
No, we went to the hearing. You know, we bring the server, and we, I was there, and the father, we tabled, trained our servers, and with everybody, all of our servers need to be tip-certified. And since then, we follow up on the IDs for everybody. Everybody checks ID.
No issues or violations since 2020? So there was violation in 2020?
Yeah.
But it sounds like there hasn't been any since 2020?
No, no, there hasn't been any. It was during the pandemic. Everybody was kind of like, and the server, she trusted them, the ladies, that they were there before, but, and from now, we check IDs. Every time they say that, we don't accept pictures, we don't take anything. Everybody needs to mean the ID, the actual ID. So our service doing very good on that because we always have them.
Like we said, we don't mandate it, but seeing that something like this has happened in the past, it may be a good investment, seeing that you're going to have a very large, I mean, this is a large restaurant.
No, we will.
So maybe something you may want to make an investment in.
Yeah.
It covers yourself.
Now we will, yeah.
Right at the front door.
Yeah.
Yep. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else?
I concur with Mr. Kratman, because that's all the questions I had. But I do have a question, and maybe Mr. Montori could answer this. Is any violations or any abeyance on this Bobby &amp; Jack's for anything? Or there is none?
No, nope.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I've been to your establishment before in Malden, looking forward to you guys coming to town. And I will echo the comments of heavily recommending on the card reader.
Oh, I'm glad you've been there.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone in the audience have any comments on this particular application? Okay, let me ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative as well, making that a four to zero vote. Is there any motion that one of my colleagues wishes to offer?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of liquor license to Los Trace Compadres LLC, working as Three Amigos Bar and Grill.
Second. All right, so the motion's offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. Again, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. So that's a four to zero vote. Welcome to Tewksbury. Best of luck.
And I want to say thank you for your time, and we're looking forward to be part of the community and do our best to do the right thing.
Excellent.
Follow the guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
All right, take care. All right, let me, let me ask, this is a hearing we started, I believe, well, actually, no, we had another item pertaining to it. So this is Brothers Sports and Grill, TNO Corporation. If there's someone here, come on up. And according to our agenda and my notes, we're going to discuss an entertainment license as well as a transfer of a liquor license and the common victual license. So I think I have more than one hearing notice, so let me just look at these for one quick second. All right, so let me read this hearing notice. That notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 8, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the application of Brothers Sports Bar and Grill located at 553 Main Street, Tewksbury, by Peter Cianakis and Kayla O'Donnell for an entertainment license consisting of music streaming, television, and occasional live music to be determined at a later date during the hours between 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. The hearing will be held in the Select Board's meeting room, 1009 Main Street here in Tewksbury. And we have ample abudders notices here that have been attested to, as well as the legal notice dated July 19, 2023. And this is, the second notice I'm going to read for the record is that notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law 138 on Tuesday, August 8, at 7:00 p.m. on the application of Brothers Sports Bar and Grill by Peter Cianakis and Kayla O'Donnell to transfer an all-alcoholic beverage license from DLC Hospitality LLC, doing business as Skybox, and to operate this license on said premises located at 553 Main Street in Tewksbury. Described as one-level restaurant having approximately 7,300 square feet with one entrance, four exits, total occupancy of 240 people. The hearing will be held in the meeting room here in Town Hall at 1009 Main Street. And again, we have a legal notice and certified mail receipts for the abudders that have been notified. So two separate hearings, we'll try to keep those in mind as we progress through the discussion. So we met you, I think, a few weeks ago, right? So, and I know you must be Peter. Correct. And Kayla, right? Do we have that right? Okay. All right. So I want to capture that for our recording secretary's benefit. So just, I know you gave us some detail a few weeks back, but talk to us a little bit more about, why don't we take the entertainment license first, okay? And just tell us a little bit about how you are approaching that and what you're intending to do.
Okay. So essentially, what we'd be looking to do is bring live music in a couple Fridays a month, solo artists or duo artists, nothing bigger than that. And basically, it would be from 8 to 11 p.m. It's kind of just music over like, while you're dining, so it's nothing too crazy, too loud.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be every Friday.
Okay. And that's it?
Yep.
All right. Will you be using like amplification equipment?
No, so essentially, they just bring in a microphone, a solo speaker, and that's kind of how they do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the only time we'd ever have anything maybe bigger than like a, like a two-person set, like piece would be like if we were hosting like a holiday party, like our Christmas party or something like that.
Yeah, we've brought in like four-piece bands at our current location.
Is that right? Okay.
I did, I do have a music schedule that we currently do at our location.
Sorry?
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, if you want to share that, I don't know if you have more than one copy, but I can pass it around. Thank you. And are each of these individuals of a soul performance?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, great.
So if it says blocked on there, it just means that we wouldn't have live music that night, only because there might be something else going on, like a bigger reservation or something.
Okay, all right. Got it. All right. Do my colleagues have questions around this topic?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holland?
It's just going to be on Friday night. It's not going to be...
It could be another night during the week, but that's typically our biggest nights, so that's typically what we bring it in on. And Drake at Friday nights are big with like football, so then after the football games, the parents come in, so we just kind of have live music.
Well, I don't know if we want to determine whether we want to do certain nights or we give it five, seven days a week.
Yep, that's your discretion. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So where are you planning? I know you guys are kind of reconfiguring the front of the existing space. So where would you be putting the bands, like off in that side room or?
Actually, so there's, the stage is going to get ripped out, so there's going to be no stage longer. So we kind of had a designated space where, if you go in there now, that's where they have like all the amplifier equipment that they use. It's just a small, you can, yeah. Basically, one of the, one of the tables would move.
You walk in here, this is like the dining area, this is the bar. So over here, when he's hiking, you can move him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Discrepaning?
Yeah, so I, thank you very much. I mean, this is, actually, they're lowering their license for entertainment much from what their previous owner has. But, you know, if we're granting this, would there be any nights of, like I know a lot of businesses start with entertainment license, the next thing you know, they're doing karaoke and other things. Are there any plans for those type of things?
So we do host, so Tuesday nights currently at the existing location, we do have trivia. So we do have an emcee there hosting the trivia. I don't know if that falls under the guidelines of having to have an entertainment license or not, but, I mean...
We would be looking to do trivia night, too.
Well, one of the things is that we would grant an entertainment license, you know, annually. And then some of the locations in town, what they do is if they have special events that are coming on, like, so like you mentioned, you're talking about maybe something for the holidays.
Yep.
What you could do is come back to the board if you were going to have something larger and come back and say, you know, we're trying to, we're going to have a band in for the holidays, that, you know, the customers have been asking for something like this. We'd like to do something a little bit larger. Or if you're going to have an event for a fundraiser for veterans or this or that, or whatever may happen, you could always come back in front of us and say, we have a couple of special events.
Okay.
And we'd like to come back for those things.
Understood.
But if you're looking to have just a basic, which looks like you're applying for now, you know, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
One more question.
Mr. Holland, yes?
The application states, you stated 8 to 11. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's when we have live music.
But the application wants 8 to midnight.
Yep. So we're, 8 to 11 is what's being asked for.
Okay, so we're changing this 12 to 11?
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone in the room have any comments on this particular item? No? Okay. All right, so let me ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's a four to zero vote. Is there any motion by my colleagues? And I'd ask you to try to be specific with the hours and the days.
I'll make a motion to, but I want to ask, so I know one of yous mentioned 11, and then somebody else mentioned, I thought 12. So is it, you declare on 11, so before we make a motion?
12. Yeah, why not, right? Since we're here. Yeah, right now, since we're here, yeah. Let's just, thank you for, yes, bringing that up.
All right.
So what are you looking for? You're looking for 12?
12.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the application for an entertainment license from 8 to 12 for the, as submitted by the applicant. Second.
Okay, motion is offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well. So that's four to zero for the record. So you have an entertainment license. Let's take a few minutes to talk about the transfer of the liquor license. So you kind of gave us some background last time about your experience in the business and the industry. You just heard in the prior hearing some concern by the board about just the service of alcohol. So just talk to us a little bit about, you know, how you approach managing that.
So all of our servers are tip-certified. We also do hold, not monthly, every other month, we hold a bar meeting, and essentially, all the servers are tested and like just gone through like more regulations and stuff. So we keep like pretty close like tabs on everything. Typically, I'm usually on scene, so if there is any questions, then the girls will bring it to my attention, but most of them are like highly trained to like...
Yeah, we don't accept out-of-state IDs.
Yeah, we don't accept any out-of-state IDs at our current location. And we've never had an issue with that.
Yeah, and you intend to continue on here?
We do not have a card reader at the, at the location in Drake, but...
You don't, yeah.
But we wouldn't be opposed to, yeah, to get anyone here.
Okay. Do you intend to have no out-of-state IDs here?
Yes.
Typically, we follow the same rules as we already do.
Okay.
It's just easier that way.
Yes.
Makes it easier.
Excellent. Okay, anybody have questions at this table?
Just have, did you have any violations in the past on your other restaurant?
Negative.
Never.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone?
Yeah, so your other location, what is the size of the location that you have?
So we have a capacity of 182, I believe. And the bar, the bar holds, we have seating for 16 at the bar. And then, obviously, I mean...
And as you heard us mention before, it's not mandated by us, but we do have a lot of college students that are around here. So I'd hate to have you come back in front of us and have us find you, take your license for or something like that.
We're actually...
Please take advantage of our police. They do a training, they do a video, they tell you when they're going to be doing things. And they ask all businesses to take part in it. You can tell kids to do whatever, and you're always going to have somebody so being on top of that and having something in hand that you can lean back on, that's, I mean, it's up to you, but it's, if you do get violation, you, that's something that covers you where you scan the ID and you have documentation that you scanned it. So it's, you know, it's something you may want to make an investment in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Possibly may even consider it. I'm thinking about considering it for the other restaurant as well after tonight, so...
Well, you're talking 200 and some odd patrons, so that's a large crowd, and carding 200 and some odd people coming in on a regular basis, it can be cumbersome. And just making sure that everybody's doing their job is, so we take it, we look at it very strongly, yeah.
Mr....
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey, you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman. All set, thank you.
All right. Anyone here want to speak to the transfer of the liquor license? No, I don't see anybody rising. So let me ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing on that item.
So moved, second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous, four to zero. And I will ask if there's a motion on the transfer.
I'll make a motion to transfer the liquor license to Brothers Sports Bar and Grill as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's four to zero. So now you have your liquor license transfer. The last item, I don't, I don't think we acted on this last time, common victual license?
We didn't finish it, I think.
Yeah, so, so that...
It's because the current owner is still operating. So I didn't know, like, that was going to be one of my questions. So after everything got approved for transfer, he planned, his initial plan was to stay open until we heard, until the state comes back with the approval. I don't know if that's how it's done or not, or if it can be done.
Yeah, so we can, we can hold off on this because this is pretty straightforward. You'd have to, you'd have to like apply through the town manager's office again and get in front of us one more time, but we can make that happen. So you want to time it pretty close to when you're going to cut over, right?
Yeah.
And if we need to do a special meeting or something, we can try to accommodate that. So just communicate with the board's office.
All right, thank you.
All right? So we'll hold off on this for now. Let me ask for a motion to table that.
I'll make a motion to table the common vic license.
Okay, all right. All right, so the motion is made to table it by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So just let us know, give us a little bit of lead time and...
So if I, let's see, if I spoke to the current owner and he gave me a date, would that be enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we could make it effective on that date.
Mr. Chairman, before we close this hearing, I just want to double check with the town manager. The fact that we transferred the liquor license and we took the entertainment and it's still going, there's no, we don't have to put per the date of transfer or anything like that.
The liquor license starts with ABC.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want to.
Yep.
We took a license away from somebody by issuing another one.
We're fine.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so just let us know.
All right.
And then we'll get that last item.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next one is Taste of Himalayas LLC. So I'm going to ask folks to come up. And this was a continued hearing, so I don't have a hearing notice tonight to read, but I will ask you, sir, if you don't mind, just to reintroduce yourself.
Yes, sir. Yeah, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Sukvinder Singh and I represent Taste of the Himalayas LLC, 192 on Main Street, Tewksbury.
Okay, and who's with you tonight?
So these are some of my team members, Shurjan Gautam and Sanjay Sherpa.
Great, welcome. Thank you. Okay. All right, so I recall that we met before, we talked about what you were trying to accomplish and I think my colleagues and I had some questions, so probably just to refresh everybody, why don't you start from the beginning, what you're trying to do, what you'd like us to approve, how you're going to approach operating your business.
Correct, okay, yes, yeah, we did have to make a second visit here tonight. We are applying for an all alcohol beverage license. And the reason that we had to circle back tonight was the, the board wanted to see that there were other team members involved regarding the service of alcohol. So at this point, we are all tip certified to, to, to serve. And I believe there is also a question about the, the location of the service bar area. It's labeled C on one of the attachments within the file. That's the location where the, the service will be done. And then there's a shelving area for where the alcohol will be stored.
Okay. All right, and your two colleagues will, are they going to be on premises here?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I know we've discussed this in the past, I'll just ask my colleagues if they have further questions or concerns they want to express.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. We had a couple of open questions, tip certification, you guys provided that, and location of the bar, you guys provided that. So I appreciate you guys doing that due diligence, coming back, it is much appreciated. I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one.
Mr. Holland?
Your two partners there, have they served alcohol before in other establishments?
I believe they have, but they can answer for themselves.
Yeah, I've, I've worked at other restaurants, it was, I used to work in Cambridge, it was called Passage to India, and like we used to, we still used to serve the drinks over there.
Okay, very good.
So for like a couple of years.
Yeah, okay. And how about you, sir?
I'm a hardship over here. Some of, he's not over there and then I took it over here.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I have a question. So I know this is a new license, but you previously owned the business before.
Yes, sir.
When you previously owned it and you had the license, was there any violations?
Zero violations.
So there are no violations?
None.
Okay, that's good news, thank you. You've heard us have the conversation with the other.
Yes.
Things about taking advantage of our police department and what they do, they come in, you will be checked. So it's just taking advantage of, they notify you and they tell you when, how, what they're going to do. And yet, we still have violations, so we just want to make sure that you take advantage of their trainings, they do videos, they talk with you and they try to help you with that. Would you have a, I mentioned today other places about a card reader, do you plan on having one at the location?
Yeah, we could definitely look into one. You know, I guess it is a serious offense and being caught up in some kind of, you know, violation, we'll just get the card reader.
Okay, that'd be beneficial, it covers you.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone here who wants to speak to this particular application? Okay, the room is getting smaller, so we will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, so that's four to zero. The hearing's now closed and I will ask if there's any motions that my colleagues wish to offer.
I'll make a motion to approve the common, I mean, the new liquor license for the Taste of the Himalayas.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's four to zero. Okay, thank you, you did your homework, we appreciate that, we wish you the best.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, are there any residents that have any other topic that they wish to speak to tonight? Nope? Okay, thank you. Under new business, we need to address the special town meeting dates. Mr. Montori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I came forward with the town meeting date at the previous meeting, I, I had the wrong night for town meeting. Traditionally, we go on Tuesday, the first Tuesday in October, so I'd asked the board to take a new vote and vote special town meeting to take place Tuesday, October 3rd at 7:00 PM. And actually, before you do that, I just want to bring up one other item, the, we toured the Center Elementary School with the moderator and school superintendent, the town clerk to discuss the possibility of holding the special town meeting in October at the new elementary school. The moderator thought for this one time, try it out, let the residents see the new school, and then in April, go back to the high school for town meeting. So I didn't know if that was something the board wanted to entertain for this town meeting before we take the final vote.
Okay, do my colleagues have an opinion on that?
I think it'll cause more confusion. I think you're going to have people showing up at the high school, people showing up at the center school. I mean, if you wanted to do it next fall, I don't have a problem with it because we have time, because right now, we only have one, two months.
Mm-hmm.
That's my opinion.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Holland, you know, I know it's a new school, but I'm, you know, we, we haven't tested anything there. You know, we have, each time we do a meeting, we have difficulty with people, not that it works so much better at the high school, but we're working on it. But, you know, having people be able to be heard, speaking, putting presentation, I mean, the high school has been designated for that, to have our meetings and people are used to it. You know, if they did a test and did some other event there and I had a little bit more comfort that it worked, I'd be more favorable about trying it, but I think it's, I don't think we want to try it with town meeting.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mackey, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I think it would be nice if, maybe not this one, the next one, next special town meeting, to at least give it a shot to the issues Mr. Kratman mentioned. We have, we're always working through kind of various audio/video issues, so if we have a new school and hopefully the system has all its kinks worked out. So if not this one, I would like to give it a shot at the next special.
All right. All right, so I guess we'd ask you to convey to the town moderator, it sounds like the board's preference is to stick with the high school for the time being.
Then I would recommend approving Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the high school for special town meeting.
Okay. Okay, may I ask a motion to that effect? So moved. Okay, motion's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we got that squared away. All right, next item, we have committee and board appointments, and we did touch on this at our last meeting. You each should have a couple of documents at your disposal. One is a vacant term list, which is what's posted on the town's website and invites people to apply. We were, we asked our administrative staff at the last meeting to identify and communicate with individuals who had applied for multiple committees to get their preference. We have that information and we have the vacancies themselves. I also have a communication from Ms. Wellman related to the Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, and I will speak to that when we get to that particular committee and let you, my colleagues, be aware of what she would urge us to consider. So the first committee that needs another individual is the Conservation Commission itself. I think that's to replace Mr. Holland, who was elected to this board and that seat hasn't been filled. There are three applicants and I would ask if there's no desire to conduct any interviews. Some of these folks are known to us already, if there's a motion for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Linda Darvo.
Linda Darvo?
Darvo.
Darvo, okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Mackey to appoint Linda Darvo to the Conservation Commission. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's a four to zero vote. The next one that we need to address is the Historic Commission, and we have two applicants. There's only one seat available on the Historic Commission, Ryan Lloyd and Alex Pratt, each applied for that position or to be considered to that position. And that would be a two-year term, it goes to 2025 if I have my facts correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we approve Ryan Lloyd because the next one up is Alex Pratt on the next committee appointment.
Second?
All right, so we have a motion to appoint Ryan Lloyd, offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Mackey, to the Historic Commission for a two-year term that runs through June 30 of 2025. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well, so that's a four to zero vote. And then, Mr. Holland, I think you probably were inferring another motion when you talk about the local historic district study committee and Mr. Pratt?
Correct.
You're offering that as a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have the motion offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Kratman to appoint Alex Pratt to the local historic district study committee. That's a one-year term, June 30 of 2024. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's four to zero. I want to remind the public that the Mass Cultural Council has, believe it or not, 22 seats at the table. There are 11 seats open and we don't have any interested residents at the moment, so if you do have some interest in the arts and distribution of grants associated with the arts, that's something you might consider. That brings us to the Tewksbury Beautification Committee, and we have one open seat, two applicants, Caitlin BugdeGuilt and Boris Pejic. And I might be wrong on this, Mr. Montori, did Ms. Guilt withdraw from this? I can't recall.
I think she withdrew from the Green Committee.
That was the other one, okay, I don't want to mess things up. All right, so we have two applicants, and I will note for the record, Ms. Wellman, although she's not here to vote, indicated that she's supportive of Boris Pejic for appointment, for whatever weight that might hold with my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to nominate Boris Pejic for the Tewksbury Beautification Committee seat.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's four to zero. All right, and the last one is the Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. And as I mentioned, Ms. Wellman, who is our representative on that committee, is recommending that we consider Maureen Caletti and Brianna McCumbie as potential at-large members to the committee. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven individuals who applied, one of which Christie Matt withdrew from consideration. And then another individual is a high school student, but there's not an opening at the moment for a high school student. So at least for purposes of this evening, I would urge my colleagues to make two appointments to at-large positions from that roster of candidates.
Well, I'll go, since the committee member has made those recommendations, I will follow her recommendations of what she thinks is the most suitable people to be on that. So I think it was, what was it, Brianna?
Brianna McCumbie and Maureen Caletti.
Maureen Caletti, I'll make a motion to approve both of them to the committee.
Second.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Kratman, for the motion and Mr. Mackey for the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye on that as well, so that would be unanimous. Okay, and I should have, again, I neglected to do something at the beginning of the meeting, but I was reminded, as we were talking, excuse me, as we were talking about committees, the town lost one of our very active committee members, Mr. Atacosta, the last couple of weeks, so I just want to urge people to keep him and his family in your thoughts. He served the community on a number of committees over the last number of years and I know that he did that with a lot of enthusiasm, so we will miss him and his presence on, on the various committees that he served. Okay, next item we have is approval of election staff and appointments. I don't know if the town clerk wants to address the board or just wants to witness our approval. You're more than welcome to join us, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. So this is our annual appointment of election staff, and before you, I have a list of members that have worked on our team, some for many years, that are requesting reappointment. So I have the list available for your review. There are a few that have disclosures, which I noted on the list, that work in some other capacity in the town and a different way.
Has your list grown or shrunk in the last year? It's pretty much the same?
It's, it has grown, actually, yeah. We, we've had some, some new people come in since COVID and, yeah, and kind of show some interest in it and I, we really have a very strong election team that we should be proud of and so, something that I feel really confident about, the recommendation and hope that you consider it.
And no change to your wardens or anything like that that we should be aware of? They're all the same?
The wardens are, I believe, all the same.
Great, okay. All right, so I'm not going to read the entire list by name, but this document is published in the board's meeting packet for anyone who's interested, and I'm assuming our town clerk will keep this roster available for any other interested party. With that having been said, let me ask if there's a motion to adopt the election staff for 2023 to 2024.
So moved.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote in the affirmative as well, making that unanimous. And as Mrs. Graffio mentioned, we have a number of disclosures, so I'll just read those into the record. These involve individuals who are employed by the town in some capacity, so they're receiving compensation in a primary position and they're also seeking to serve as an election worker. And they're required by the disclosure statutes to disclose that financial interest under Mass General Law 268A. So the first person is Dustin Weir, who would be the town moderator and also serve as an election worker. Second person is Alexandra Louder, who is our community and economic development planner, will also be working as an election worker. Jacqueline. Jacqueline Powers, who is an administrative assistant in the Community Development Department, will also be working as an election worker. And Deana Callahan, who is in the administrative side at the Building Department, also on the list, approved as an election worker. Meredith Fahy, a classroom instructional aide at Tewksbury Memorial High School, working as an election worker. And then last, but not least, Barbara Flanagan, who's a member of our Board of Assessors here in the town of Tewksbury and also was approved as an election worker. So for the record, those will be memorialized as having been disclosed. And I think that covers off on anything we need to do for you tonight. Right?
With the one exception of, the law changed last year regarding appointment of police details. So my recommendation is for the board to consider transferring that appointment to the police chief as it was in the past. So we normally have one police officer at each precinct, which I'm recommending that we continue to do. And that, that the police chief, depending on availability and the rules regarding their details and how they implement those, that the chief is the responsible party for that.
Okay, all right. Any questions on that for our town clerk? Okay, can I have a motion to designate the police chief as the responsible party for that action?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's offered by Mr. Krabman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well. So that's four to zero to accomplish that, okay?
And election staff, did we take the vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, perfect.
So we're good, all right? Thank you. Have a great night. All right, we have, I don't think we have any material, but we need to take action to schedule hearings on some recent liquor license violations.
Correct.
And just anticipating that we'd have that discussion. I think we have a board meeting, is it the 19th of September? Do I have that right? No, it's not, right?
It's 12th, isn't it?
Yeah, I think you're right.
So the next meeting's of the board on September the 12th?
Yep. So if it's acceptable to my colleagues, we'll, we can schedule those hearings for the 12th of September. We'll lead off the evening with those. Schedule them at 7:00 or 7:05 or whatever is required. How many are there, Mr. Montori? Is it two?
Only there's two.
Okay, all right. So we'll do that. And you'll issue the formal notices and all of that, right? Okay, next, we need to take action, excuse me, to accept a $50 donation that was directed to the Senior Center or the Council on Aging in memory of Madhuri Mulaisan, who used to frequent the Senior Center. And the director of the Senior Center has indicated that they received a $50 check. We need to deposit that into our revolving fund for the benefit of seniors. And I'd ask for a motion to do so.
So moved.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krabman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. All right, Mr. Montori, we have a town council invoice?
We do. We have one from July 1st to July 15th, 2023 in the amount of $2,847.50, and I would recommend approval.
Okay, any questions on that? If not, can I ask for a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion's offered by Mr. Krabman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye on that as well. Do you have anything else tonight?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, all right. That brings us to some minutes. Mr. Holland, I'm sorry.
Yes, any questions on, everybody have a chance to review?
Yeah.
No questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 13th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to approve June 13, 2023 draft minutes by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krabman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, the chair votes aye, so that's three in favor, one abstention, for the record. Mr. Mackey abstains. Do you have another motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2023.
I'll second that, thank you. So a motion offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krabman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Okay, the chair votes aye, so three in favor. And the chair will note that Mr. Mackey is abstaining from voting on that. Might matter as well. And that brings us to one more.
The minutes of June 27th, 2023. I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's a unanimous four to zero vote on that set of minutes. Okay, that brings us to board reports. Mr. Krabman, you want to lead us off tonight?
Oh, it'll be easy. My boards should not meet during the month of August, so I have no reports.
Okay, Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give a few thank yous out. One to Mr. Montori and the staff. For the past week and a half, we have had the Massachusetts Army National Guard conducting a cyber assessment on the town. And that has been going very well with, thanks to the support of Mr. Montori and our IT director, as well as various other members of the town staff. And that will be wrapping up soon. And we're very appreciative of the assistance from the Massachusetts Army National Guard for that service.
Excellent, thank you.